I'm going to call the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, November 12th to order, November 12th, 2024, to order. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments and announcements? Anyone for public comment? Patrick?
Good evening, Select Board. Thank you, Patrick Otten, East Harwich. A couple of comments. So, one is a question. Well, yeah, I guess one is a question, public comments, but if there's an agenda item that says for discussion, do I wait for the discussion period to make comments? Or do I have to do all my comments in the public comment?
Do you want to comment on the public comment policy? Is that?
Yes.
No, I'm just asking.
Yes.
Okay. So you can wait till then?
Wait till then?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We'll take comments then.
But to start things off, I see that in your public comment announcements is a submission for the town annual meeting photos. And I'm going to ask that you try not to associate Harwich with a invasive, a highly invasive, damaging invasive to our environment, our coastal estuaries, and our ponds. I'm referring to this picture.
Okay.
That, this is a highly invasive plant, and it should be photo place, someplace else besides on your annual report, because this is really not where you want to be representing Harwich. Okay? Thank you. Several months ago, I asked about a town's newsletter, whether or not that's possible. Other towns are posting newsletters for their town. I just was looking for an update. Another issue I have is the inconsistency in the town website and lacking information needed to use it. There are 44 boards, commissions, committees, departments, 33 departments. These are all public groups. There should be public access. I don't even understand what makes a board, a committee, or a commission. What do those names mean? But if you go on our website and take a look at the 44 boards, commissions, and committees, it's very inconsistent. There needs to be a complete description of function and purpose and change of responsibility, key activities for each group. Each group needs to have a contact email address. It needs to define a relationship with the town departments, relationship with the other groups, terms of the members that are part of that group, and terms and limits of their term, and when their meetings are held. So, you know, the town website is great. It's been updated, drawn a new format, but please, let's have consistency. So, when I'm looking for information from a board, committee, or commission, that information's there. What is your purpose? What are you doing? How do I contact you? Okay? Who's on the board or meeting? Who's on the group? And how do I contact? I think that's critically important, because we are a public town. Those are public committees serving the public, and the public needs access. Okay? Let's see. And I will wait to comment on the policy for public comment.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Megan?
I want to note for the record that Member McCaskill is...
Oh, thank you.
And any votes you take would need to be by roll call for that purpose. And stole my thunder, Patrick, but yes, we do have a photo contest for our town report. And there's instructions on where to send them. Our PA Natasha is taking care of that. We're looking for photo color, photo prints, and they should represent Harwich. So please send word around to any of your photo-friendly people to send us some nice photos.
Thank you, Megan. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Okay. Onto the consent agenda.
I'm asking to hold back the 30th minutes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Item A, the, to accept the resignation of Mary Ann Compagnia from the Housing Committee effective immediately, and Item B, approve the Select Board meeting minutes from October 28, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Other than, did you send your comments?
Of my comments.
Yep.
Done for 28.
Okay. So, are you not good? What are you not good with on the 30th?
The 30th is the first time I've seen it. There's...
Okay. So you have other comments that you'll send to Danielle? Okay.
I didn't realize I was going to be on this agenda until the weekend.
Okay. Jeff, you have any comments?
I don't.
Did you, Pete?
No.
Michael, do you have any comments?
No comments at this time.
Okay. So I'm gonna call the vote, but roll call, all in favor. Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so 5-0. New business? This item, well, Megan, I can either let you describe it, or this, we talked about the annual presentations. I think it was last week, Pete, you asked about it?
Yep.
And actually forgot that we changed the process where we had annual reports submitted by the committees, and they were submitted to the board for review. And we did not have them come in and present them, because in general, they would come through and read the report. So, basically, I think it's been the last two years we've gotten the reports, and then if there's anything in particular that board members have questions on, the liaison can go back, or we could ask them to come in. So I'm just bringing it back to the board to see if you want to continue on with that policy. And Megan, if you have anything to add.
I think you described it perfectly.
Okay. Pete?
I'm happy to go with the majority of the board. My preference would be to invite them, and if they wanted to come in, great. And if their preference is to submit their letter, then so be it. But to me, they put a lot of time and effort in, and if they get an opportunity to come before us and give us an overview of what's been going on, or some challenges they're facing, or perhaps some great things that are transpiring, they could say it right to us. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had initially been in favor of this, at least trying it, but after seeing it over the last couple of years, my concern is that it's not for us. It's for the government, for the public, to know what's going on. And I think we'd be fooling ourselves to believe that the exposure they get here is going to be just the same as if they have to go searching for written documents somewhere on our site. I'd rather have the public able to see this in real time, if that were possible. So my, I'd cast my vote to have them come back in.
Okay. Jeff?
Especially since the Charter says that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm consistently in favor of, in public, in real time. So that's where I would lean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael?
I would agree. If they can come before us, I'd like to have them before us. But to Pete's point, if they can't come before us, I would certainly take the letter.
Right. Yeah, the report. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think we technically, do you want to vote?
Just a question, no need for a vote, but a question. We typically had started these back in September in order to get all of these committees in front of you before the end of the year, because that's when their reports are due. Since we're already mid-November, would it be okay to put these into January, February as well? Or do you want them all before the end of the year?
I don't see a problem with January or whatever. But, Don?
Yeah, I'm thinking that all, not all reports are equal. I mean, we might want to up, front-load the regulatory boards, so that we have an idea of what they're going through, and the public has an idea, and then we can start winding down with things that are advisory.
Okay. All right. We can start scheduling those, scattering them through board meetings in the next few months.
The next couple of months. Yeah. Okay. Great. Thank you, Megan. And now, Don, I'll go to you on the discussion on the tree warden rule.
Well, the only reason it's coming through me is because I'm as old as some of the trees in California myself. Patrick had talked about it. I know I've talked about it with one or two members of the board, too. We used to have a tree warden. They were dedicated to doing it. It was Link Thatcher, actually. He did a terrific job. Somewhere in the mid-2, early 2000s, like '04, '05, somewhere in that area, we pulled back on that, and it went to the DPW. I'm not sure, in my own comings and goings, I'm not sure that they have the same fervor for protecting trees or pruning them. And we're supposed to be a tree community, ironically enough, so I'm not sure that it wasn't a good idea to give a specific task to a specific person for that to be watched over. I mean, I'm willing to go wherever you want to, but I mean, people were interested in knowing how this morphed. That's how it morphed. For years, Link Thatcher was doing it with a crew, and then it came to a point where the board voted to eliminate the position and give it over to the DPW. And it was about 2005? That's just memory. So, everybody can do what they'd like, but it had always been done the other way.
Do you want to hear from Link at all on what their current process is, or?
Yeah, although the part that I'm speaking to is not whether he does or doesn't want to do it. It's about, you know, the policy part of it, about whether we would like to take some special attention and give it to the trees. I know Matt Sutford also asked about this issue, so I'm kind of fronting several requests.
Right. He came in last week with this, yeah. Link?
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. Howell's correct. In '05, we had a failed override. Link Thatcher, with one employee, a part-time employee, was the tree warden for a $12,000 stipend. He was part of the failed override. We laid, the town laid him off and gave me those duties. I think Sleckman Howell's assertion, I think what he's driving at is there's competing demands, and I don't look at that through the same lens, and he would be absolutely correct. Believe it or not, I have statutory authority through the MGL for the right-of-way, and I have the authority to remove any trees that are diseased, or an impediment to public travel, or anything like that. Whereas, under the Tree Warden Statute, Chapter 87, you need a hall, call a tree hearing if it doesn't meet certain standards to be removed. So like, as a DPW director, if we are widening a road, building a sidewalk, doing something, I can remove those under my authority as your director. Could not do the same as the tree warden. So he's kind of right. We've really cut back. We did have a tree planting program, the Link Head, that we kept going with. But the longer I'm in this business, the longer I know the trees are a problem next to the roadway for root damage and for wires. And then you have beautiful trees that grow up and so forth, and then the utility company comes along and hacks them. Quite frankly, I'd rather have reliable power than a nice-looking tree. Maybe a tree warden would look at that through a different lens.
Thank you, Link.
Thank you.
Don?
No, that's, I'm just the conduit.
I thought you had something else.
I just had, I just had the history of it.
I'm going to speak for Matt. Okay. My name is Tom Flynn. I'm a resident here at Hoyt Road. Matt is out of town, and he asked me if I wouldn't bring his notes to you, some of which you've just said. But, so, if I might read this.
Sure.
Dear Madam Chair and Board Members, my apologies for not being there to advocate for the hiring of a new tree warden. The genesis of my own advocacy began when I realized that the town's position regarding trees is bipartite. Don't ask. On the one hand, there's been a great support for the Harwich Conservation Trust through the CPC funding. On the other hand, there has not been support for the nature of trees that we get in our agendas. This observation has awakened a need, a need for a middle ground, a need for a tree warden, who will look at the larger picture. Support for cutting down trees standing in front of the Brooks Free Library was endorsed by you, the board, and brought before the town meeting. Had the Select Board, along with the Harwich Historical Commission's responsibility for trees in the historic district, been fully understood and presented to the library trustees, perhaps this letter would not be before you. I hope that a focus on a few rogue bricks under the library trees will now help the board focus on a more fulsome manner. After all, bricks can be shaved down, roots can be shaved. While safety is always to be considered, a tree warden will hold a full toolkit, so that safety does not become a standalone cudgel. So what is a tree warden? A tree warden is a person in charge of shade trees on public town lands. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, has 14 sections for protecting shade trees along town roads. I didn't know that. That's news to me. Since 1899, Massachusetts General Law has mandated that all cities and towns in the Commonwealth have a tree warden, who is responsible for the trees on public property. Even a tree warden by law cannot cut down a tree without first holding a public hearing. Harwich is far removed from this observance. The Select Board determined the highway supervisor can remove trees by his own authority or as directed from the board. It is unfortunate the town has put the tree warden's responsibility on the shoulders of the highway superintendent. It appears the board is unwilling to have an impartial and informed tree warden do the work to benefit the town. At one time, Harwich did have tree wardens, which you referenced, Link Thatcher in my younger years, and then Carley Francis. Why has the acceptance of this situation by the board and by the town supervisor gone unchallenged for so long? I do not know. Massachusetts law requires that every town and city have a qualified tree warden, either elected or appointed, Chapter 41, Section 1, and Section 106. Most towns on the Cape have a tree warden. Summing up, thank you for letting me opine on the need for a tree warden. Thank you for considering the law. And then I've got some notes that you're welcome to have from Matt. I agree with Matt on this tree warden business. I didn't know anything about it. But I do know that in Chatham, they took down a really magnificent tree in front of their library, and I'm not sure what the reason was. I think it was a healthy tree. But it seems a shame to do that, that these trees are awfully pretty, they help us breathe, they do a lot of good things, and they make a town look prettier. Once the tree is gone, it's gone. That was a totemic tree to me, in Chatham. And I challenge you, we don't have to keep up with Chatham in this regard, you know? We don't have to cut down two trees in front of our library to match their tree. And I think it's probably well within reason to figure out a way to save those trees and to make it safe and walkable there. The tree warden would be an interesting way to solve the problem, certainly take the responsibility off of the highway superintendent, who has a million other things to do. And it doesn't always work. It doesn't save every tree. There's a tree warden in Chatham, didn't save that tree. So there's got to be a reasonable thought go into this, I think. So those are my thoughts. Can I leave you this?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Give it to Megan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion by board members? Jeff?
Just a couple of questions, Madam Chair, through you, to the Assistant TA or whomever could answer this. Would this position need to go before town meeting?
Not if it's part-time, which I would imagine it would be part-time. The Charter says new full-time positions need to go before town meeting.
Great. And do we have any data on, is, for example, is Chatham's tree warden part-time?
I don't know.
And other towns? And what do those towns pay for a tree warden?
That's my, that was my question, too, so, yeah.
I'd be in favor of a tree warden, part-time. I think it would be helpful to link. I think it would be just another expert in the toolbox. But, you know, at budget time, we're, you know, it's hard to talk about a level-funded budget and then add a position. So I'd like to get a little more information as to the cost of a part-time tree warden.
Sure. You can do some research. Pete, do you have anything?
I'll just add, I happened to be sitting here that night in '05 when Link was voluntold that he was going to become the tree warden. And he told us, you know, I'll give him credit, he told us that night, that he would see this position through a different lens than his predecessor. So I'm a little surprised, to be honest with you, that whatever this is, 18, 19 years later, that it's still his responsibility, and we haven't done something with it. But more to come as we discuss budgets and possibilities of enhancements down the road.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things, and I'm kind of divided into two sections here, the financial Don, and I'm a little bit more the cultural Don, too. Financially, our statement said that we could do enhancement services if we could identify a corresponding offset somewhere, so that we wouldn't be raising the whole budget. Just so hold that thought. It isn't that rich a position. Without going too deep into the violins section here, the Cape, when it was originally settled, was hardwood. All of the trees were hardwood. Then they started getting torn down for firewood for Boston, or for furniture to be shipped off to England, and farming, to, you know, make room for properties to do that. When it all started coming back, it started the same progression that nature does. It started with smaller shrubs, then it got into evergreens, and it started working its way back towards the hardwoods. They were here before we were, those trees. It's kind of ironic to have certain communities designated as U.S. tree communities when there's probably an obligation in there somewhere to make sure that we pay attention to that. And so I am kind of in favor of this, but my role here was mostly to bring up the history. And I really think that if it is, let's say it's 17,000 now, because of inflation creep, or 18,000, I think we should be able to find that without increasing the overall budget number, somewhere inside of, you know, a government that's spending, what is it, 44 million, 45 million, without the schools? So I'd be in favor of finding that money.
Thank you, Don. Michael, do you have any comments?
You know, I look forward to future conversation on this. You know, speaking about the library, you know, that was an exhausting conversation. And that was talked about by library trustees, historic us. So I'd hate to see us just jump to get a tree warden for that reason. But qualifications comes to mind, so if we're, if we're going to start talking about this, I'd like to see the sheet of qualifications, so that we're not getting somebody with a personal agenda that doesn't just want to see trees cut down. And while I have Mike, I'd just say, Link, you've done a great job.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Link. Patrick?
Yeah, hello again. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. If you look at the Mass General Laws, the tree warden is to protect trees where necessary, and to protect public from trees. So there's two roles there, protecting the trees as well as the public. So that's understood. When you do a Venn diagram of trees, there are those trees on the streets, on the highways, and then there are those trees on the commons, and parks, and schoolyards, and town forests. So to have someone such as Link representing the trees on the highways and roadways is great, but what about that other section of the Venn diagram? And where they meet? Why can't a tree warden and Link work together to achieve the goal of, one, protecting trees as well as protecting public from trees? So the Mass Bio, the laws also specify the credentials that a tree warden must have, given the size of your community. For this community, under 12,000 people, certified arborist, three-year supervisor to experience at commercial and municipal tree care, and a Massachusetts pesticide license within 90 days of employment. So there are criteria for what a tree warden is and what they can do. I'm appreciating the discussion and your openness to hear all comments, so thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
We did blow by 12,000 a while ago.
Madam Chair, Sleckman-Pocarsky, what a memory. Seriously. I want to say, in actuality, although I was named the tree warden, I have a guy named Brian Albee, who has now been promoted to our road manager position. He is a horticulturist, has a horticultural degree, and he has been the de facto tree warden since I was named. So since 2005. Yes, I hold the title because the board told me so, but when I need trees inspected, looked at, determined whether diseased, whether to come down, I have staff that has some expertise in that matter. I just wanted to let you all know that.
Excuse me.
The planning board is in the hearing.
I was in the wrong place.
Lot of new faces on the planning board.
Any other discussion except for bringing it back with some more details on a qualification, a job, well, we know what the job description is, and estimate on what the cost would be?
I agree with Michael. I was never intending for this to be an action night, is just as much as bringing it up and have people think about it.
Okay. So we'll get additional info, bring it back. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Onto old business. Have our public calls, public comment draft reading. Is there any comments from board members before we actually have the reading? Do we have to read the document again? Michael?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd ask, and that maybe we hold this off until next week. The policy itself is actually not in the packet, only the edits are in the packet. So I don't know how we have a reading on something that's actually not in the packet for the public to read.
No, it's just a breakdown of what the recommended changes were.
The second page here with A, B, C, D, didn't make it in?
No.
Yeah. Oh, no, it didn't. It didn't. No. Okay, that's fine. We can bring it back.
And Madam Chair, one more thing?
Yeah.
If we could ask for the policy on making policies be put into the packet as well, so the public understands that?
Yeah. Thank you, Michael.
I got you're sitting in front of me.
All right. So we'll table that one and bring it back next week with both, the policy of policies.
To remind you, next week, you have a standalone executive, and the next public meeting wouldn't be until...
So it'd be the 25th, right? So bring that back on the 25th.
Madam Chair, could we make a note to replace those two windows?
I have no problem with them.
You are, you're over there.
I know.
Okay. So Item 2 on A2, the policy on grinder pumps.
Madam Chair, do you want me to read the policy?
Yeah, I think we have to, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see what they're on. Town of Harwich Low Pressure Grinder Pump System Policy, LPGP. Purpose: The purpose of this policy is to define the low-pressure grinder pump, known as LPGP, system program, and responsibilities related to the implementation of grinder pump purchasing, distribution, and ongoing ownership. Scope: The engineering design for the Town of Harwich wastewater collection system will generally consist of gravity mains and service laterals, except in certain locations where individual low-pressure grinder pump systems are deemed necessary due to elevation differences. Where an LPGP system is specified for a single-family residential property in the sewer system design, or is otherwise recommended for installation of any such property by the town's design engineer, the town will provide, one, LPGP system per property, at no charge to the property owner. Town shall procure the LPGP system through a competitive bidding process. To receive the LPGP system, the property owner shall sign a transfer document prior to receiving the pump from the town. The town will then transfer the ownership of the LPGP system to the homeowner. Upon acceptance from the town, the homeowner shall thereafter be solely responsible for its installation, operation, maintenance, and repair according to the Harwich Sewer Use Regulations. The operation and use of such LPGP systems shall comply with the Sewer Use Regulations as promulgated by the Board of Water and Wastewater Commissioners, and any related policies adopted by the Select Board.
Thank you, Pete. Any comments from the public? That's our first reading of our new grinder pump policy. Hearing nobody. We have to go for a second before we can do any more. We have to go for a second before we can do any more.
You do, you, you do have to go through a second reading, but if you have any comments or questions that you want to ask now, you can do that.
Right, does any, I mean, we talked about this pretty extensively last week. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As many of these meetings are kind of compartmentalized, I just want to briefly remind everybody again that this was not a punishment to anybody. The way the process originally worked when the Chair and Mr. McCaskill and I were here in the, the twenty deans was, there was a discussion about people buying their own grinder pumps. There was, the majority of the board felt that was unfair. This merely conifies that in order to, the price for admission is soaring, is we're going to give you the first grinder pump, we're not going to make you pay for it. And thereafter, it's your responsibility to make sure it keeps working. But, again, I can't stress enough, this was something for the public to be able to at least see, that puts in the writing what we had voted back then.
Right. Thank you, Don. Any, any other discussion on it? Michael, you have any comments on this?
No, no comments at all. Just take, take a moment to thank Mark Drainville from GHD for being on the call tonight and for his work on this.
Thank you. All right, so we'll bring it back.
Madam Chair, just a point of reference here, I brought up the policy on policies that Michael talked about. So, it does state that we, we put a motion together, of course, I just lost it.
To bring it to a second reading.
To bring it to a second reading, correct.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, a five-zero, Megan. Okay, on to item B under old business, the discussion on Raptor Road and Round Cove, Round Cove, Round, that's wrong, Round Cove Road Plowing.
Easy for you to say.
Votes may be taken. And Jeff, we'll go, you on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just, there's a correction on the agenda, we're not discussing Round Cove Road Plowing.
No, it's, but it's on there, so I'm just reading.
Okay, sure, right, I get it. Just setting the, the groundwork for where we're going here. Just for the public's knowledge, the, how we got here essentially was by way of my office hours, where I had a few citizens who live or building from Raptor to Round Cove asked if the, that part of the road could be plowed, since the rest of Seth Whitefield Road is Link, if you don't mind, through you, Madam Chair, could I, Link, come up?
Yeah.
I'll be mindful of your voice, Link, I can tell it's a little stressed. First, I want to say, thank you very much for putting together how, so quickly, the answers to the questions that helped me truly understand how our incredible DPW determines how private roads may become plowed. And through the process of educating myself, through you, and going to the DPW website, as you, as you, you know, put here in your answers, everything's laid out. So, I'm actually sitting here wondering whether or not the board really needs to even be involved in this. And I'm, I'm all for taking the board out of anything the board doesn't need to be part of. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you maybe one or two simple questions. Just for clarity, from Queen Anne Road to Raptor, Seth Whitefield Road is being plowed?
Yes.
Thank you. In your opinion, and again, this was really eye-opening for me, there is a process that a private road must go through to become, I guess you would call it, plowed, for that, for lack of a better word, has to go through an inspection.
Yes, um, let me get the dates right. I believe in two thousand and six, the Board of Selectmen directed me to develop a policy. We modeled that after the Town of Chatham's policy. The fact is, we have three hundred and sixty-five private roads in town and we were, they were concerned with doing town equipment and high contractors' damage. If trees weren't high enough, vegetation was in, road surface was defective and so forth. So, we developed those standards and every September, October, we inspect all three hundred and sixty-five roads and publish the results on the DPW website.
So, it's, now I have to ask you a couple more questions because I learned something new there. You go and inspect them on your own, you don't wait for a phone call from a resident who lives on a private road to say, hey, can you come check out my road and see if it passes?
Well, I don't personally inspect it.
Of course, of course.
I have staff that inspects, inspects the roads. Actually, that would be, usually, our road manager handles that, that was, would be the, Chris Nickerson until he retired.
Excellent. Pleasure. And then, just one more, if I may, the, the portion from Raptor to Round Cove Road that is not being plowed, that nine-hundred-ish square, plus or minus nine-hundred feet, or a thousand feet, would that, in your opinion, pass as it sits today?
Currently, it is certainly wide, wide enough and meets all the other standards. The road surface has a few minor washouts that would need some T-bays or some touch-up. In my opinion, pretty minor work.
Okay. And one more thing I learned, private roads require six inches of snow prior to the DPW going out plowing.
That, that is correct, because a lot of the dirt roads, plowing, when the gra, when you don't have frozen ground, is difficult, takes a lot, a lot of skill, try to use front-end loaders and other equipment so you're not doing as much damage, you have to go back and, and fix at a later date. So, we wait until we have six inches or more of plowable snow before we do any dirt roads.
So, last, lastly, if one of the residents from Round Cove, I'm sorry, from Raptor to Round Cove made a phone call to DPW and said, "All of this has been done, we'd like you to come back out and re-inspect," is that a reasonable way to get the rest of this road plowed?
Um, if, if it meets standards and the board wishes us to provide service to that portion of road, absolutely.
So, that, that would add another question, thankful. Why would the board then have to, does the board have to allow or, or give you direction on all the other private roads? And why, why would this one be different?
This one is, is a very unique situation, in fact, I, I think almost a one-off, in that you had a, you had a private party seek a license agreement with the town in order to improve what used to be a cartway.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that was done, and that was done up to Raptor Road.
I see. So, I see, obviously, and I want to thank administration for putting the, the previous litigation information in, in the packet. I just want to be clear, I, I see this as purely separate and distinct from what was litigated. I might be wrong and I'm certainly interested in hearing everybody else's opinion on it, but it speaks of widening, repairing, hardening, or resurfacing. It doesn't speak about plowing. So, I'm just wondering if we're just doing, if, if we're overdo, overcooking this. Seth Whitefield's already plowed, there's another nine-hundred feet, it doesn't meet standard. If the residents made it meet standard, where do we go from there? And I would ask the board now, I, I've said enough, see what the board has to say.
I, I am unsure of the ownership of, of said road, so I am unclear if it's a town road, if it's a county road, if it is private. If it is private, what you described is certainly doable and the residents could repair it and we would provide service up to Round Cove.
I'd like to hear from the other board members, if I could?
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate what you're saying, Jeff, and there is a lot more to this story because we're going to wind up getting into a conundrum of sorts here. The road improvement was subject to a public hearing, not just an agenda item. The whole room was filled. Dan Wolf was here, Margot Fend, a, a whole army of people in the area who were making the argument that they didn't want to see improvements necessarily to the gateway to a major state park that is really just in its natural condition. So, the problem is with this, the tail could start wagging the dog. If you're telling them that they have to upgrade the road in order to get the plowing, that's precisely what the hearing was about, and I would argue we'd need another hearing because that was, that was a vote of the board, that we said, leave it alone entirely, just the, the actual condition of the road, which would lead to whether or not it would qualify for plowing. So, we'd be backing our way, it's one of those camel's nose under the tent kind of discussions, we'd be actually backing away from our original position in order to facilitate some, how often, through you, Madam Chair, how often over the last few years has that six-inch snow threshold been hit? We have had plowable snow once in the last three years, once in the last three plowing seasons.
That's pretty much my comment.
Yeah. Pete?
No, I, you know, Jeff kind of alluded to it at the beginning as far as the involvement of the board, and I'm happy to discuss policy all day long. I'm certainly not going to inform the, the DPW Director on which roads he should plow or not plow. If there's a larger discussion regarding the, the ownership of that road, you know, this talks about that it's a, according to the assessor's database, it's a county road. If a greater discussion has to happen about that portion, I'm happy to have it in the, in the correct format, but tonight to, to tell the DPW Director to plow or not plow a road, I, I don't find that this board has that jurisdiction. Again, happy to discuss policy.
Thank you, Pete. Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would agree with Pete, and we have come a long way on this. I, I think that the process speaks for itself, the website and the way the DPW Director operates all speaks for itself. To Don's points on the public hearing, I certainly recall that being a lot different than, than he's describing it, as well as what was in there, and that fight was a very different fight, and that was advertised as a public hearing for Round Cove Road. I have my own thoughts on that, kind of irrelevant to tonight's conversation, but Town of Howard is blessed and lucky to have a state park in their town, and the fact that we don't maintain it so everybody can use it, it's shameful in my mind. But as far as the plowing goes and, and the DPW's policies, and thank you, Jeff, for bringing that up, the way the DPW is good and, and the, there is no argument on whether or not the residents of that road have the right to fill in the potholes and the trenches. There's absolutely no argument on that. So, the plowing policy of the DPW department should prevail over anybody's thoughts on whether or not we should help four taxpayer residents by plowing an extra nine-hundred feet of road after six inches of snow. And the fact that we continue to get ourselves in the way on this is something that we shouldn't do. The policy is there, Jeff, again, thanks for doing all that homework, but we, we really need to move on, and there's no question that we should be plowing this road the same way we plow every other road that meets standards.
Thank you, Michael. So, I guess at this point, it's, and thank you, Link, I know you've done a lot of talking tonight for having a sore throat. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? Any action? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I sent you a bunch of information. I don't even have to ask Link, but you guys, I'm sure everyone knows they plow the road right in front of the town hall. That's a county road. Never taken by the town, Route thirty-nine. I don't have to ask Link, I'm sure they plow that. Never taken by the town, it's a county road. I'm sure I don't have to ask them, they maintain those roads. I don't know why, the only county road in Howard, which they don't want to maintain, is Hawx Ness, which goes into a state forest. I, I sent you all the laws on maintaining the road. Technically, you're not supposed to even let it diminish in width, you're supposed to maintain it. If you don't maintain it, you know, the county, which, the county doesn't have any roads, according to them, but the county can just pay somebody to fix it and then send you the bills with how the law, you know, reads. And I read that snow removal road law there, according to that, you're supposed to have Round Cove Road, it should be plowed, all of it. I go out that way. Supposed to have two feet minimum clearance and be a minimum of ten feet wide, so that's fourteen feet wide. It's about eight, nine feet wide now, and the bushes are right up to the road. So, according to your snow rules, Round Cove is not up to standard, and it's a town road. In my opinion, if the town makes rules like the road should be eighteen feet wide, eighteen feet tall, why doesn't the town follow its own rules? Why is that so difficult? And there's numerous laws in here that say you're supposed to maintain the roads. If I got a group of people in there to say that people without children should pay less taxes because they don't have any kids in school, and I got a bunch of people to come here, would you guys vote and say, oh, that's a great idea, that's fair? But that's not the law, and the law is very clear. I already gave all this information to you guys, I gave you the fact that these county roads haven't been taken probably four years ago. It's on, it's on this information, I got it from the town clerk years ago. I would just love to know why you don't follow the law on this particular area. Why is it so controversial? I mean, it's a state park, why don't you guys want people to go in there? I will gladly take it over. You can take it by eminent domain, I will put a gate up on each end, and I will maintain it. The road gets a ton of traffic, it probably gets more dog walkers than Thompson's Field. So, I'll gladly maintain it, just give me the road, I'll take it over. Any ideas? You have the power to do it.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I brought it this far, so I'm going to put it to a vote so that there's an end, one way or the other. So, I move that the DPW plow from Raptor to Round Cove, under the condition that the residents improve the road so that it is a passable road in the eyes of the DPW to plow.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Michael's second. Any other discussion? Don?
Briefly, I'm not sure where the line goes after this, in all deference to Mr. Freitas. He lost that argument in state court. Accordingly, because Freitas is a butter and an uninjured traveler, does not have a private right of action to compel the town to make improvements or repairs, nor was he entitled to mandamus relief. That was the ruling of the court in two different levels.
I didn't have a standing.
You can't talk from your seat, so.
Understood, thank you, Don.
Okay, so, moved and seconded. I'll just call the vote. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
No.
Pete?
No.
And I'm a no, so that's three to two. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing it, board.
Well, thanks for bringing it forward, though.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
And just, just for clarity purposes, so if the neighbors fixed the road, so it's a plowable road, is the order of the board, because the motion from, from Select Board Member Handler was to plow it, and going back to Pete's comments in the beginning and talking about policy, there was no policy decision there. So, are we ordering in that motion, the DPW Director not to follow the protocol on the rest, like he does on the rest of the roads? Or are we just, what are we doing? I guess I'm confused.
We're taking no action, and that's, at this point, that's my opinion. I'll share, I'll go to other board members. Don, you have any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, as a practical matter, no one's going to tell DPW not to plow a road if there's an emergency of some sort, because the fire department has to gain access. So, even if there's no permanent answer to this right now, the real answer is, the residents could, as they have already decided that they are going to, get the same group together and say, and I do understand that you sold a lot of houses there and saying people have the expectation that, having moved in, that something was going to happen, but maybe the real answer is they can make it happen themselves. Just like they're going to fill in the potholes, they could get a plower, and I'm pretty sure somebody in that area has already agreed to do that.
Thank you, Don. Pete, any other additions?
No, just to respond, since Michael mentioned my comments, Michael, my point is specifically that, I'm not going to tell the DPW Director to plow it or not to plow it, I want them to follow the written policy, and if a policy needs to be amended, then I, I look for administration to bring that forward to us.
Right.
Madam Chair, three.
Yep.
Thank, uh, thank you for that, Pete, and I guess, you know, going, flipping from Don's comment to your comment, and, and, and... and, and again, confusion is the only thing that I have right now. We are not, by way of this motion failing, we are not directing the DPW Director in any way, shape, or form not to plow that road, correct?
Correct, or encouraging, either way.
Right, either way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And thanks again to Select Board Member Handler for the homework and bringing this forward.
On to contracts, Megan?
Your first contract is with Colonial Municipal Group. It is for the purchase of two police department vehicles.
Oh, and I do want to say that Chief Considine is online, available for any comments. Yep.
I thought he was leaving.
Questions, I should say.
So these two police cruisers are part of the annual town meeting from 2024. So the appropriation was approved at that town meeting, and the two vehicles are part of a three-vehicle approval. So we're coming up with another procurement shortly, but this one will replace the chief and the deputy chief vehicles.
Great, thank you. And Kevin, I'll go to you if you want to give any more additional information. You don't have to, but I just want to give you the opportunity.
No. That, sorry, my volume was not working. Thank you, Madam Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So as part of our vehicle replacement plan, we've concentrated a lot over the last few years on our patrol vehicles, our line vehicles. This year, we need to concentrate on our administration vehicles. We have one with about 160,000 miles, that is our training slash academy vehicle. That is going to be replaced as these cruisers move down the line. So my current vehicle will be moving down the line, the deputy's current vehicle will be moving down the line, and just all those vehicles trickle down to replace two vehicles, two administrative vehicles with very high mileage at this point. And then the third vehicle that will be coming at some point will be a detective vehicle, that needs to be replaced. So this year is our year to concentrate on the administration vehicles. We haven't had any purchases, short of the chief's vehicle. We haven't replaced these in seven to eight years. The typical lifespan for these is ten years or more, just with obviously less miles than a, than a road cruiser, short of the chief's vehicle, which gets the most miles. But that's our, that's our plan this year with the administration vehicles.
Thank you, chief. And do you experience a delay? I know it's obviously not the same type of specialized equipment as the fire department, but listening to Chief LeBlanc and, and the delays that they experience, which are fairly significant, what's it like for, for your department?
We do, in fact, the three marked cruisers that were approved last year, that, that I was in front of you for approval, we're just getting those right now. We're getting, we got, we got two of those last week, we're getting the third hopefully next week. And, and the delay is not that the cars weren't available. The cars, I was able to get them off the lot, they were there. Typically, we get the, the last prior year's model, so they're still on the lot. The problem is the lack of help to outfit these vehicles, which are complicated to outfit, and has been taking one year to do. So the administration vehicles, as you know, have a lot less equipment in them, so we're going to get those a lot quicker, and including these two, which will help our admin section of the fleet, and then can go back and concentrating on the patrol, the patrol end next year.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
If I could, and, and thank, thank you, Madam Chair, you actually asked a couple of the questions that I had, but chief, I'm wondering, it's been a couple days since I sat here last. What do, what do we do with those old vehicles? You know, I know you said these trickle down, but eventually that means something trickles out, right? So what are we doing with those nowadays?
So, good question. The, the majority of our vehicles always trickle down to other departments. As you see out back, there's at least four old police cruisers used by town hall. They had, we had some at the, we have old cruisers at Highway, and we also have old cruisers at, at Harbor. So when we look at our replacement plan, we're getting three times bang for your buck, if you will. We use them, they trickle down to spare cars in our fleet, and we get miles up to 120, and the one I mentioned up to 160,000. Those can even be trickled down to other departments. So they're getting used over their span of life by, by us a lot, and then other departments. We've, we have had a few that just were rusted out, that they weren't safe to have other departments have, and we'll get trade-in value for those.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Don, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Thanks, Kevin, for being here, chief. The total cost of $57,802, that's fully modified, ready to go for you. There's no additional costs that come to the town for any other modifications?
That is correct. Any vehicle you see, whether it's unmarked or marked, I mean, they, they have equipment in them. Those are full, fully stocked, and that's why the prices are what they are, with all the equipment.
The price looks fair to me, anyway, that's all.
Okay, Michael, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I just make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
An aye, an aye, five zero.
Thank you.
He did say for you to sign. He did say for you to sign.
Yes, he included that.
I have signature folder here.
Yep.
The next contract is with Insight Public Sector, Inc., for open gov permitting software. This is a three-year contract, where each year is between $38,000 and $42,165, for a total three-year commitment of $120,568.94. As you know, this permitting software has been successful with the building and health and conservation departments, and we've even looped in fire and sewer, the sewer department as well, to do some online permitting. So it is due for renewal, and our IT Director, Sarah Eaton, did some procurement on her own while I was away last week, and that is why you are missing one, one of the sheets, but I can, I'll get that to you, but she did it properly, and everything's fine.
Great.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Michael?
Make a motion that we approve as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Thank you. All in favor? Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
An aye, an aye, five zero. It is a good permitting software. There's a couple other towns not using that, and it's difficult. This one's a little easier, so. Okay, town administrators report.
I don't have anything for you.
Great, select board?
My only item tonight is our, our previous discussion on bringing forward some of the, I'll call them customary articles, we are going to continue to add those, so that's my only item. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
What the heck. In the spirit of renewal here, I'm just going to bring up again, I'm looking to see some resolution on the golf course restaurant settlement. We're heading towards a year and a half, and I think it's unreasonable that this keeps going on. But it's not my 20,000, it's somebody else's, so it's kind of unfair for that discussion to linger. I don't, I don't know that you were there, if you were, I apologize for not recognizing, but yesterday they had the Veterans Day ceremony, and Pete and Jeff were there. It was a terrific day, that, that really, the upgrade to that cemetery has really taken off. It's just really nice. And it was, it was heartwarming to see that, and I'll defer to Jeff to say more later.
Thank you, Don. Jeff?
I'll start with that, then, Don, I think it was a, it turned out to be a phenomenal day. Some, some takeaways from me, Bobby Parr, his, his comments were just, they were, it was a wow. So thank you to Bobby for doing that. I would also like to acknowledge the Monomoy High Choir, I believe.
They're good.
They were unbelievable, and they added such a really nice touch to the day. Seeing some, it brought the bell curve down a little and the age that was there, which was nice. Don threw it one way, the kids threw it the other, so it was a nice little.
Thanks for noticing.
It was hard not to. I'd also like to remind everybody that on Thursday at 3:00, I'll be meeting with Bob McCready, Joe Powers, the town administrator, and Eric Kincher to, as we talked about way back, now that the 2024 financials are closed, the books are closed, we're going to go over them and discuss them, and that will set us up nicely for our joint meeting with, with FinCom when we, when we have that in early December. And then last, but definitely not least, the game may be over by now, but Monomoy Field Hockey in the semifinals playing Sutton started at 5:30, and it's 7:01, so we could probably find out if they.
They might have won by now.
I, I'm, I'm sure they have, so. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Michael?
I have nothing, thank you.
And I'm sorry I missed, I would have liked to have attended the Veterans ceremony. Work, but I would have liked to, and I'm glad you guys were all there, that's, it's a nice event, so, and thank you, Don, for doing that. And that's it, I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Go on.
Aye.